So that's what I would like to say.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
First of all, I'd like to say that thank you to all the council members for the work that they've done this year due to all the mess that has been going on. And I'd like to wish every single one of you a Merry Christmas. And Wayne, you're gonna be missed. You've been here a long time, so it's not gonna look right looking up there and seeing someone else besides you sitting up there. But I will continue to fight for our police officers in trying to get more in this county because we sure do need them. And I'm not gonna let go of that one. But I thank you for everything that y'all done and everything that y'all helped me with. Y'all have a great year.
Thank you, Chris. Any other public comment at this time? Any written comments can be delivered to Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith, I think you had a, you're reading into record.
Let me do it now.
Go ahead.
This was from the Mountain Rest Community Club to Mr. Wayne McCall, friend of the Mountain Rest Community, retiring county council member. Dear Wayne, the board of members of the Mountain Rest Community Club simply want to say an inadequate thank you for the innumerable gestures and gifts you personally have extended to our community over the years. The hillbilly pavilions stand strong today, proudly displaying the rude support that you and your queen erected. We are reminded of the 2013 Journal article that described only a patch of your philosophy, the quiet benefactor, invisible and anonymous, and how he would prefer to be described. County Councilman and gentleman Wayne McCall does not know this article is being written about him. However, the citizens of Oconee County need to know what this humble benefactor has done in this specific area since he took office in January of 2009. Every month, every month, he has signed his county council paycheck over $8,000 a year to pay the delinquent property taxes of seniors who would lose their homes otherwise. As of January of this year, which was 2013, 42 homes have been saved due to mostly Mr. McCall's huge act of generosity over the four and a half years. His endorsed paychecks go to the Salem United Methodist Church, who set up the Fund Rest, which is relief effort for seniors' taxes. Pastor Sam Whitehead works closely with the Oconee Tax Office to provide monetary help to seniors whose property could be seized if they had no way to pay the delinquent taxes. Pastor Whitehead said 85% of the funds is due to Mr. McCall's generosity, as well as other citizens and organizations who hear about the fund and send in donations. One lady whose home was saved sent a $10 check several months later to help save someone else's home. Are you familiar with the story of the widow's mite? Another grandmother died without a will, and there were seven to eight family members still living in the house. The taxes were delinquent, and the case was going to court. Rest up, Dan, paid the taxes, and the family was able to stay in their home. There are 42 stories. Note, this was written in 2013 behind the 42 houses that our councilman's paycheck has saved. In October, more homes belonging to seniors could go back on the block for failure to pay delinquent taxes, but Mr. McCall's $8,000 a year salary continues to go directly toward paying some of those taxes. We need more men like Wayne McCall. Wayne, you are a prize and a champion. Oconee County will miss you. The Mountain Rest Community will miss your voice on the county council, but we know you will continue to pour your heart into modestly helping others. Thank you from the board of the Mountain Rest Community Club. And then everyone heads on. A copy of this letter will be included in the backup materials as well.
Any other council member comments at this time?
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis. This is all good. After last week, well, last council meeting, excuse me, when I brought up a fact about the lack, disappointment for Tri-County Tech, I got calls from industry. I didn't know, the video goes all over the state apparently, because anybody called me up. Man, I'm glad you had the nerve to say that. So then I got calls, two calls from Clemson University, higher-ups there. You did the right thing. You said it. So then I get a call from Hamilton Career Center. Well, this guy called me, Mr. Godwin. He's a real machinist. He got his five, he got his six years. He's same as me. He teaches machine tool program. And we talked for a good while. He said, I want you to come out and look at our program. I said, well, you tell me when I come out there. He called me up one morning, said, can you be out here right now? I said, yeah. So I go out there. I've never been to a building so impressed. Those kids going to Hamilton Career Center, they're not shucking and jiving and screaming and hollering. They walking in at all the classes, not just machine tool, all of them, like adults. So I go into the machine tool program, and he's showing me little projects the kids make, very impressive. And then he showed me this one girl. She's in 11th grade. Show me her project. The principal is what it's due, by the way. And it's perfect. It's perfect. Everything she's done, perfect. So they showing me the lathes. They got manual machines. Everybody else, they assign you a machine and a blade and a milling machine at the beginning of the year. Well, everybody else has got DeLorean's tool holders, which a monkey could center the tool because it drops in its center. She's got a lathe with a four-post tool holder, like we run in the real world. Her project's unbelievable. Her name was, last name was Brian. I can't remember what her first name. So they showing me, she's in there, and they showing me things she's working on. I told them, I said, this girl, she gets, she could, right now, she goes to Dent Shipyard in Charleston. I said, she'll walk in there $45 an hour, and they'll give, they'll be sure she gets her six years. So then I called Dr. Thorson up, told him, I said, man, you got one heck of a program. Not, I went over to welding shop. They showing me all what the welding did. So I dig into the trash cans. I want to see, I want to see what's messed up. Welding shop. They professional. Those kids are learning. They are really learning. So then I asked, I asked the principal, and I asked a bunch of instructors, I said, why is Tri-County Tech got such a big disconnect? He says, it's easy. Mr. Godwin told me. And I told him I was gonna say that. So the principal of the Hamilton Career Center knows I'm saying this, by the way. He said, we get the kids all hyped up. They got, their programs are full. They got kids everywhere wanting to get into their programs. So I said, what happened? They go to Tri-County Tech. And I hope Tri-County Tech is listed. They said, well, first off, they don't have real machinists teaching this class. And then they get them over there, and says, oh, all that old manual stuff is obsolete. You don't need to do that. We don't teach you how to run CNC stuff. The kids realize, this is according to Mr. Godwin, they're gonna be a button pusher. That's all they're gonna be the rest of their lives. They get discouraged and leave. Ah, we don't, we don't want to do this. And that is the disconnect. And the last thing I want to say is, of course, we all up here, and everybody in the room knows who writes Tail Willie. So Willie run his little mouse at the paper. And you know, I don't like that when you're gonna talk about me. So I want to remind Willie something while Willie's out there listening. It seems like about four years ago, when the paper folder went bad at the printing, at the print plant, paper, it's about that big around, solid steel, that long. Well, brought a guy from Florida, he's a real machinist, old Frenchy, he's a hell of a nice guy. And they'd already been, they already been, they found a place that could work on it in Tennessee. Six weeks lead time, and $300 an hour. So they come to me, please, like Otis, like James Brown on stage, except they put the cape on him. Please, 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 please. So it took a lot because the shaft don't go, it's a blind hole shaft. So we saved it. And then Willie, forget I saved his roll behind, they won't write bad about me in the paper. But once again, I want to commend Dr. Thorson, the entire, absolutely the entire staff of Hamilton Career Center. That place is serving the county and serving the kids for what they need, and they need, they need to be commended. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. I would like to join in wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years. And I'd like to say a few things about Mr. McCall. Mr. McCall, you are gonna be missed by all the little people of Oconee County, the truck drivers that need a certain type of stone, a builder that needs a permit or an inspection, people that have a pothole in the road in front of their house, because I've had them call me that have talked to you, and you referred them to me. And far as Willie, just a constellation, Mr. McCall, you was one of the, I won't say the original Three Stooges, but you was one of the Three Stooges, and the Three Stooges, to my way of scoring, has never lost to Tail Willie. We beat him at everything we've done. But he didn't just single you out, he's already singled out the black community. He singled out the councils, the city councils of Wauhala, Westminster, and Salem. And yes, Salem, remember, he was against the Waterloo for Salem. But as a constellation prize, you're in good company. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, one more thing. I would like to mention that we haven't seen Jerry Barnett here. Jerry, he's called me a while back. He's had trouble walking. He said, he said, my feet hurt. Then he said, my legs are hurting. And he's got, he called me, he said, I guess you ain't seen me. I said, yeah, Jerry. He's got, he's losing the feeling of his legs. He said, I'm walking with a walker now. So I think, even though some people laughed at Jerry, he's a decorated Vietnam veteran. He was involved in the Tet Offensive. He's certainly no coward. But we need to remember him, because, you know, you might not agree with him, but he was, he really spoke from his heart. So I think everybody needs to remember Jerry Barnett. Did you ever get in touch with him, Amanda?
Yes, sir.
I, the only thing, his girlfriend, Doc, works at Walmart, and that's the only contact I know, to get a hold of it.
I did find his address and plan on paying him a visit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other council member comments? Yes?
I just would like to echo the comments. Honored Mr. McCall, thank you for your service to our county. It is, when it's done right, it's sacrifice, and I appreciate you sacrificing over these years. And I do ask all of the folks who are listening to remember everyone who is not here and who's not doing well during these times, not only physically, but also mentally. It's a very challenging time for those who might feel isolated. So I just ask that you remember those people in your prayers. And I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a very happy and safe and healthy 2020, 21. And Mr. Chair, just again, appreciate the opportunity to serve and thank the world of the staff here and the hard work that y'all all put into making sure Oconee County is the best county in this country. Those are my comments. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas as well. It's been a tough year. We've gone through it, you know, together. We've, there's been a lot of thinking about other people during this time, and I think one thing that we've learned this year is we're better together than apart. And even though we don't always agree with each other, sometimes those battles create good friendships. So it's one of those things that we sit tonight during this moment of silence, remember those that we've lost this year, remember those that are in the hospital fighting for their life this year. Several elected officials that pour their heart and soul in this community that are fighting for their life. So let's remember them in our moment of silence tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir. Pray with me if you'd like to. Well, Father, thank you. Thank you indeed for this year, that we are alive. We are alive because of you, because you created us, you hold us together, and you give us many good gifts. Help us to have an eye toward what is good, what you give us, to be appreciative. It's been a long year. It's been a difficult year, and there are a lot of people who are hurting, perhaps folks who, if we have an eye open, we can help. So in this time of year where we kind of perhaps close in with family, help us still to have an eye toward our neighbor, to love our neighbor, and also at the same time to get some rest, that peace would prevail over this community, over this nation, over this globe, and that 21 would be a good year, that your blessings would unfold, and that your will would be done. The same for this meeting, that this would be your meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. McCall, will you lead us in the last pledge of allegiance for the year?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
Approval of minutes, December 1st, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hart, second by Mr. Elliott. Any changes, amendments? All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Brock? Any comments tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Council, I'd like to just obviously reiterate the Merry Christmas, Susan's greetings, healthy holiday wishes for all of us, appreciation to our citizens and our staff. Thank you, Mr. Kane. But actually, I really want to appreciate you guys. I brought a lot of things to you this year. I've put a lot of things on your plate that I feel like were tough decisions for you at times, but not once have you hesitated in giving us, me, the administrator, clerk, attorney, citizens, staff, what we needed to get through this year as easily and as efficiently and effectively as we could for our citizens. I'd really like to thank you for utilizing our staff, Mr. Hart. Thank you for always calling in the reds. Wayne, for always calling in the issues. Mr. Kane, for calling in road signs. Mr. Elliott, for being on top of everything. Mr. Davis, for always just being on top of everything, period. But you've used this, you've used our body for public good every single time that you have used us. And that process is working, and it's working its way to our citizens. And that benefit is an echo effect, ripple effect, if you will. We do have some changes in holiday hours and scheduling. Please check our social media and our website. Both are updated daily on changes. We have some times emergency closures due to COVID and having to clean. I would like to tell you that those are behind us, but the fact is, they may not be. So please pick up the phone, call departments as you need before you take the time to drive here. And finally, Mr. McCall, Jerry Barnett's not here, but I feel like out of all the years that Mr. Barnett has sat right here behind me and talked about the tricked-out tahoes, there are seven on the council agenda tonight. So if I may channel Mr. Barnett for just a minute. Y'all don't need these tricked-out tahoes. We really need to focus on the bottom dollar, watch our money, and look out for the taxpayers of this county.
Constitution.
Oh, yes. And Amanda Brock always have, always will be. Okay.
Well said.
If there's anything else you'd like to say from above and beyond?
Where were you raised?
Sir?
Where were you raised?
Oh, here. Coffee right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So honest to goodness, I hate that we have all these tahoes on the agenda and that Mr. Barnett can't be here, because I was really hoping to heckle him just a bit tonight. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir. Just one matter, Mr. Chairman. When we get to this title regarding OCCB, Conservation Bank, discussing ratified grant application modification, I just would like Mr. Andy Smith, who's the chairman, to come up very briefly to give a little bit of the backstory while we're modifying this and why it's still for the public good. When we get to that matter, if that could happen, that would be great. Otherwise, I have nothing else.
All right. Let's move on to Proclamation 2020-12, proclamation supporting South Carolina's Right to Farm Act. Whereas Weaver Side, in a wonderful region of the United States called Oconee County, in which the oldest and largest industry abides in harmony with the mountains, lakes, and rivers and all their beauty, whereas the Oconee County Council desires to preserve, protect this natural beauty, the future of agriculture, and the welfare of our farmers, whereas the growth is rapidly occurring frequently to the boundaries of agricultural operations, often impeding the farmer who is feeding many families while trying to earn a living for his own, we believe support of protected measures is appropriate. And whereas agriculture has significant hurdles to overcome naturally and therefore informing and educating the public as to the importance of these farms and how critical it is for these operations to continue, unhindering by complaints and unhampered by frivolous accusations is our duty. And whereas currently, anyone in South Carolina, resident or not, can lodge a complaint against any farm and operation, it is the farmer who bears the burden of proof of compliance. And whereas the Oconee County Council supports the South Carolina Right to Farm Act and increased awareness of the importance of agriculture and easing the burden that falls upon farmers when complaints occur, now therefore, we Oconee County Council fully support the South Carolina Right to Farm Act and fully supports following all guidelines specified therein, approved and adopted this 15th day of December 2020. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We do have somebody from the forming that's here today. If the council wants to join or council wants to stand, that's up to y'all completely.
Walk up here.
Please don't.
He's good. I'll step behind him.
No, 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 no. Listen, listen, is that what you? Oh, you don't get behind these pretty girls.
Everybody say ag.
Cheese.
Or cheese. Please, right there.
Please, yeah.
Learn to smile with your eyes.
That's right. That's what I said today.
Appreciate all that y'all do in the ag advisory, but I want to hear most.
This is a man to me.
Okay, I've met her before. But if I run into her on the street, I wouldn't know that was a man.
Exactly. I probably wouldn't either.
Do we have a public hearing tonight for ordinance 2020-21? Ordinance authorizing and approving, one, the development of a new county industrial and business park; two, the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Anderson County; three, the distribution of revenues from the park to the counties and relevant tax entities; and four, other matters related thereto. No one has signed up for this public hearing tonight. If you'd like to come forward, you can. Any written comments can be delivered to Ms. Smith. I move to close public hearing in ordinance 2020-21. Move to third reading on the said ordinance, 2020-21. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion.
Make motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a second read in ordinance 2020-23, ordinance granting certain easement rights to the city of Seneca at the Seneca Rail Park for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating the pipelines, manholes, and related items for the purpose of conveying potable water or sanitary sewage, industrial waste, and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Make motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First reading following ordinance, ordinance 2020-24, ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances in limiting regards, in particular, only regarding the removal of distance requirements currently found on section 32-181 of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion.
Second.
Make motion in a second. Any discussion?
What is that about?
If I may, Mr. Chairman and Mr. McCall, this is simply to adjust the language regarding assisted living group homes and the like.
Got you. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First reading following ordinance, 2020-25, ordinance authorizing Oconee County to enter into an energy-saving performance arrangement between Oconee County and Johnson Controls Incorporated and a related lease purchase arrangement not to exceed $3,400,000 between Oconee County and one or more lenders, each as described in South Carolina, 11-27-110 and other related matters. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Make motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reed, was this what you said, that you was gonna go into further details on?
I'm glad to go in whatever detail that y'all would like. So we're in a little bit of, well, not a little bit, a lot of negotiation on the contract. I've sent you all the first draft that JCI sent to us. So the terms that we're gonna be negotiating, I don't want to go into right yet. What we're trying to have set up is on the 19th, have a workshop so JCI can be here before the council meeting to discuss exactly what's going on. That would be before second reading. And so that's probably the best time to flesh it out. Any remaining details, but the essence of the deal for the public and everyone to know, pretty simple formula. JCI has recommended a number of lighting HVAC and HVAC control improvements that are going to cost 3.2 to 3.4 million dollars. They're gonna generate that amount of savings over time, and they're guaranteeing that the savings will pay for the improvements. That's the South Carolina statute setup, and we'll be following that. So right now, we're digging into their proposal, their initial contract, and just having, and setting up the financing, and just having first reading on it tonight. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Just to break one point out. This is for our buddies Willie. This is not the Johnson, this is not the Johnson Controls that I'm a contractor for. This is the Controls Division. They are, used to be somewhat related with Tyco. Tyco, now they're on their own. This is called Johnson Controls, but they maintain the facilities and advise of plants how to save energy. It's not anything to do with the Battery Division, which is now called Carlos. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, thank you. Action items, local ATX award, $71,000. The sale in the backup material. Do I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation to approve ATX grant recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Make motion in a second. Any discussion? I would like to thank the committee that has meant several times to go up to these grants, and Mr. Phil Shirley heads up that group, and I appreciate his leadership in there. And any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We do have a request for council to approve a letter of support to be sent to Oconee County Legislature delegation regarding the temporary reduction of certain regulatory constraints. Even in the best times, and farmers and ranchers in Oconee County and throughout South Carolina face relentless shortage of animal processing facilities that can adhere to the many state and federal regulations currently in place. The global pandemic has made the severe shortage of animal processing facilities worse by increasing the demand for fresh meat and reducing the available animal processing workforces. The Oconee County Agricultural Advisory Board recommends the county council present to our legislative delegation some temporary solutions for our farmers and ranchers predicament by temporarily removing some regulatory constraints. It's staff's recommendation for council to approve a letter of support to be sent to Oconee County delegation regarding the temporary reduction of certain regulatory Oconee County delegation regarding the temporary reduction of certain regulatory constraints pertaining to farm animal processing. Do I have a motion to approve the letter?
Absolutely.
We got absolutely, and we got a second. Any discussion? I would like to thank those local farmers. I made a statement that, and I stand by that, I'll eat any local farmer's food any day, no matter what, over anything that I can buy in a store because I know where it comes from, and I know how much hard work went into that. With farming on both sides of my family, I know how important it is, and appreciate all of those small farms, even the smallest of the backyard farms to the largest farms we have in here. It is a very, very tough industry, but it is the most important industry that we have around here. So I thank those standing up for that, and I fully support this letter. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a discussion regarding Oconee County Conservation Bank. Discussion ratified modified grant application and grant approval. Mr. Andy Smith, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm Andy Smith. I'm the chair of the Oconee County Conservation Bank Board. Been before you before. Coming to you about a grant award that y'all approved, that we recommended that there be a grant to the, to Upstate Forever of $66,100, which was 10% of the value of the Wetstone Creek Preserve in Mountain Rest on Rocky Gap Road. It's actually a farm that, the Robbins farm, half of it, half of it's in timber. The grant application came to us last November, November a year ago. We recommended that y'all approve the award. It came as a fee simple purchase with a conservation easement on it. The plan was to, in the closing, in the transaction, to put a conservation easement on the property that permanently protects it, and then for there to be a fee simple purchase of the property from the state of William Lyles that would go to the Natural Land Trust. It was kind of a three-party transaction. In the intervening time since the approval in December of last year, the Natural Land Trust, who's the ultimate owner of this property, they've tentatively negotiated a purchase with the Forest Service, some national forest, Andrew Pickens District, of this property. It's, it's not finalized by any means, but the U.S. Forest Service won't accept properties with conservation easements on it. So it's a modification of the grant application and the grant approval, which originally required there be a conservation easement on it. So we're coming to you for the ratification of not requiring that conservation easement on this property, and also to require the Natural Land Trust to sign a grant agreement with the Oconee County Conservation Bank. In the event that the property doesn't transfer to the Forest Service, that will require the Natural Land Trust to conserve the property in accordance, in accordance with the Oconee County Conservation Bank's ordinance, and to notify us before the property is actually transferred to the Forest Service. That's basically what we're asking. It's a modification of what was approved. We feel like, and we, we knew that, that they were, what the Natural Land Trust often does with properties is buy them when they're on the market to prevent the sale for development, you know, to conserve properties. And then they try to either manage it themselves with funds they've raised, or transfer it to other entities like the Oconetown property, where the Native American village was, that they purchased and then transferred to South Carolina DNR. This is similar to that. The ultimate goal for this property is permanent conservation, and that will either occur by the Natural Land Trust doing it, or more likely, it being transferred to the U.S. Forest Service. So we're asking you to ratify this modification of that earlier grant approval.
So the, the grant request is still the 66,100 is stated in there?
That is correct. Dollars and cents don't change. That's correct.
And that's based on 10% of the property, so?
Indeed. The qualified appraisal value of the property, that's correct.
All right. All right. And how much tax dollars is used in this?
None.
I just like to ask that question. So a lot of people don't understand where the, where the money comes from.
So all you folks that want to donate to conservation, the Oconee County Conservation Bank's a great place to donate because every dollar, every cent of your donation goes towards conservation. We don't have any overhead. We work the county. We do it as volunteers. It doesn't come out of taxpayer money. It's the best use you can have of conservation money to protect property permanently in Oconee County.
Citizen initiated by the landowner.
That is correct. It's for private conservation. That is correct.
Any other discussion from council? All in favor to ratify the modified grant? Or do I have a motion, sorry?
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Thank you. And I have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion besides that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we'll have you sign it. I've signed it. I'm going to leave the original documents with Ms. Smith.
Okay. All right. Do we have another action item? Oconee County Emergency Services seeks council's ratification of their request for the grant award from the USDA. Natural Resource Conservation Services, emergency watershed protection, which is reimbursable up to but not to exceed $5.2 million, with a 25% local county match, which may be paid in cash or in-kind services for the purpose of clearing debris from county waterways and restoring impaired watersheds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Let me state, sorry. I meant to, I got to state the one. So there was three things in this. One, ratify the letter of request from Oconee County to the USDA. Two, authorize the county administrator to complete the application for grant funding, executing such other documents necessary. Three, that the prior, that prior to obligated the county to local match or other expenditures greater than $150,000 in cash or in-kind for this project, this matter can be, will be brought back to council for discussion and further action. In cash or in-kind expenditures or agreements to expend that do not exceed $150,000 cumulative are hereby approved and shall come from FEMA. Reimbursements recently received as discussed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank staff for working on this. I know that they were working on this grant while also working, obviously through COVID, but also working on cleaning up after the tornado, and which will continue. And so appreciate y'all's hard work on, on this application. I think this is a great use of, of several funds. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have, tonight, seven Chevrolet Tahos. It's staff's recommendation that council purchase six Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit SUVs and one 2021 Chevy Tahoe without the PPV package to Love Chevrolet Columbia in the amount of $289,966, based on state contract number 4400024875. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? One thing I always like to mention, too, we have a few people call and ask, why don't we purchase these locally? These are through the state contracts. The state works on the pricing from there. And anything else you want to add, Ms. Brock?
Generally, state contract is negotiated prior to being approved and sent out during our budget year. State contract generally comes out in November, and that market price for the retail price of automobiles and SUVs has already been set prior to state contract coming out. For the MSRP's and the discounts are pretty significant on state contract.
This will replace a lot of the high-mileage vehicles. As council has worked during the budget season over the last two years, this is getting a lot of that stuff back on track. So I really appreciate council staying true to what we're doing and talking to our citizens about what we're trying to make sure that we're spending money where we need to be spending money. And, and, you know, one of my biggest things is, a lot of these vehicles are going to be taken off the road.
Correct.
And so some of those will be sold, and, and some of those that, that may can be reused will take other high mileage off. So this is not in addition to the fleet. It's one of the things that we constantly have got into. We've bought seven new ones, and we kept seven old ones. This is one of those things that I appreciate our administrator and our vehicle staff on working, working hand in hand to make sure that we're replacing and keeping moving forward. So?
If I could just add that, too, Mr. Davis, some second interruption. One of the things that we do with the vehicles that we do remove from the roads is our municipalities, being a much smaller surface area and geographical driving area, we do allow the municipalities to choose from the, from the better of the ones that we take off of the streets. Because, of course, you know, our driving distance is 274,000 square miles, and theirs is not. So our, our vehicles that we take off for high mileage can be an enormous asset to the municipalities at such a low cost for the changeover and stickering or any of that sort of thing.
Fantastic. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council committee reports, real estate facilities and lands, land management met on December 1st, 2020. Mr. Phil Shirley talked about the Seneca Creek Access Improvements and Friendship Boat Ramp Recreation Areas. We, he presented the Seneca Creek Access Area, talking about the need for that specific area and the growth that that's needed, especially on that Hartwell, on the Oconee County side. We also talked about the Friendship Boat Ramp, that the Corps of Engineers intend to close the boat ramp. So we are talking about that. Mr. Shirley also noted that staff's recommendation to add Friendship Access Area and Boat Ramp to the existing 10-year lease that expires on February 24th, and would utilize up to $5,000 annually from local ATEX operation. I made a motion, suggested by Mr. Hart, to bring Friendship Boat Ramp to discuss, in discussion of full council. And I'm here tonight to make that motion to add Friendship Access Area and Boat Ramp to the existing 10-year lease that expires on February 24th, and utilize up to $5,000 annually from local ATEX for operation, maintenance, and personnel. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no board and commission appointments tonight. We do need to, a motion to go into executive session. For one, receive legal advice and discuss contractual matters related to the rock quarry. Two, receive legal advice and discuss contractual matter related to potential contractual matter with respect to the disposition of certain accounting on property. Three, regarding an economic development matter project rise. And four, receive legal advice related to opioid litigation and defendant's bankruptcy issue. And we will have elect Matthew Durham joining us on specific ones, not relating to legal advice tonight. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? No action was taken in executive session. We do have some motions coming forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In relation to the first matter regarding the rock quarry, need a motion to direct staff to proceed with payment as discussed.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay.
In relation to the third matter, project rise, need a motion to direct staff to continue negotiations as discussed.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, in relation to the fourth matter, the opioid litigation, need a motion to direct our opioid litigation attorneys to execute the restructuring agreement.
Motion.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion.
All in favor? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all of y'all.